Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
From the Westminster School Board, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's begin with introductions of those board members who are here. I'll start with you, Margie Ferry.
What else do I say?
That's the jurist, member of the Westminster School Board.
I'm a member of the Westminster School Board and happy to be with me.
This is Heidi from the Westminster Center School.
Well, I just wanted to share with you what's the school board.
Jim Vazina, Director of Finance, for GAVI Technology.
And on the screen, let's welcome Karen. Go ahead and introduce yourself. You're muted, Karen.
There we go. I'm Karen Blanchard, and I'm a member of the Westminster School Board.
Thank you. We're making the effort to join while traveling.
Yes.
Andy Haas, go ahead.
Yeah, Andy Haas, Superintendent of Schools. Apologize for not being there in person. Got double booked today, so.
Right, well, thank you. We'll go ahead and proceed, but thank you so much, Andy, for being here as well. Thanks to Fact TV for recording this and Nicole for taking minutes. Let me ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda that anyone is aware of? Hearing none, we'll proceed, but let me open by saying that this is a special meeting of the Westminster School Board, our meeting that was scheduled for last week. Our meeting's being held, regular meetings are on the third Thursday of each month. And we were rained out and stormed out a week ago, and really for safety reasons, canceled the meeting and rescheduled it for tonight. So thanks to everyone for understanding that. And we've scheduled it at a different time, beginning at 5:00, because by making this date change, we're now meeting on the same day that the Wyndham Northens Union Elementary School District meets. So we're going to be expeditious. We're going to move through those things that we need to accomplish in this meeting with a goal, really, of closing the meeting. Just to keep it as before, 6:00, so we have a lot to cover in the time allotted. Let me ask, I don't think we have anyone here to make communications from, make comments from the town government, but Rick, you see none? With that, the first order of business is to review and approve board minutes. And I noticed that the actual agenda has dates that don't apply to Westminster. The meeting minutes that we have to approve are those from June 9th. And I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 9th. Charlie has moved, we don't need a second. Any discussion, any corrections? No corrections, I saw none as well. So let me simply ask, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Great, thank you very much. So the minutes are approved, and let's move then quickly to the reports. And I'll say as a preface, this is not to diminish the length of time either Superintendent Haas or our Director of Finance, Mr. Vazina, would speak, but I think one of the most important reports tonight is to hear from the principals since we're getting so close to the beginning of the school year. But not diminishing whatever you need to say. So Andy, go ahead and please start.
Yeah, no, thank you, Cheryl. I really don't have a lot to report. It's been, I want to say it's been a fairly quiet month. We are gearing up and getting ready, you know, for school. We are working with both the Town of Westminster and the Town of Rockingham just on the bridge closure, which all indications are April. So we are going to start beginning, you know, planning and just how that might impact all of our communities, so. But nothing that we need to worry about for the beginning of the school year. We are in the process of bringing on a new transportation supervisor, who, you know, the first order of tasks for that person will be getting bus routes out, because we know that that's important, and we know August is right around the corner here. And so families are going to be looking for those bus routes. And so we should have those out soon. But, you know, we're looking forward to, August is kind of our ramp-up time, and so I think by our next meeting, we'll have a lot more to report, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Superintendent Haas? None at this time. Thank you, Andy, and thanks for sticking with us here tonight, even though we'll, like, appreciate it. Jim, go ahead. Thank you.
So, just to give you a little rundown on un-audited, unreserved, unbalanced, and the UE budget, 6 million, 954, 684. And what was expended of that, was 6 million, 140,804. So it gives a balance of the 813, 880. And if, with the UE, and I just will say that the percentages of how that's divided up, I'm looking, looking at the page. So I think it's a third page in. And you'll see way over on the right-hand side, where it says Windham Northeast. Does everybody find that? On the tax page, tax flow tax page. It says yellow, page 1.
Oh, yeah, we've got that, thank you.
Okay, so, on that, it says 74.75. So each of the entities has that percentage, which I believe was people based, pretty sure. So that's the percentage that I used in dividing up what preliminarily, before the audit, you would look to receive.
Let me clarify for people, you're talking about remaining funds estimated in fiscal year '22.
Correct.
And because through that year, that fiscal year, Athens and Grapton and Westminster were still merged in the Union Elementary School District.
Yes.
People probably not used to hearing UE.
Yes, oh, right.
Union Elementary School District. And actually, the figure that we have been using, that I'm seeing, is closer to 70%. So we may need to verify that, but this will give people an approximate idea, like, the amount from fiscal year '22 that would be coming to Westminster as a grant. Then the monies to be, just as in end of fiscal year '21, those monies, closer to a million dollars, have already been awarded to Westminster. The townspeople, after recommendations from the board, will make recommendations to the town about how to spend them. Charlie, you've got a question?
Yes, I'm a little confused about who's getting on. So this sounds like you're dividing between the elementary schools and the high school.
No.
That's what this chart is saying, 74% to Wyndham U, SCD, and 33% to Bell's Falls.
I think the high school is a different, it's separate from what the UE.
But 73% of what, about 813?
That 73%, if you take the entities Athens, Grapton, uh, Grapton.
Grapton.
Those, because I think Athens was like 11, Grapton was 13%. And so those amount to 100% for the UE. And Westminster, the percentage of their budget was 73%.
This actually might not be because I documented for us, Jim, and your, because Charlie is correct. He's looking at a reference to the Dolls Falls High School. This does not look like the document that I'm used to seeing that was in the town report.
Right, right. Now, this, and this is just what the state gives for a finalized tax level.
Multiple districts here. Why don't we put this aside, because I'm not sure that, but I do think the front page that you've shown us here, is when your numbers would be, would be correct. And then.
Is that, is that, is that 813, is that 100%? Or is that 74% or something else?
That is 74% of the 813,080.
So you're saying that is 74%, what is 74%?
The 670, that's actually another 80.
Oh, I see, right, I see. So that, got it, got it. And then it's less than I thought it would be, but anyway.
And this, and this is just the straight-up budget that we give from the town? Or is this the COVID grant?
Oh, he said it's not COVID grant.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. What grant is it that we're talking about?
We're not talking about the grant, we're talking about the budget. Or, in this case, he's referring to last year's budget, the fiscal year '22, that just closed. And it was the last year of the Union Elementary School budget, which is made up of Westminster, Athens, and Grapton. And because Westminster is now our own school district again, as of July 1, showing us what monies from last year's fiscal year may come to, or will come to. You know, this is an approximate, but will come to us very soon.
You are pulling with us on our.
Correct.
It is. I just won't say anything. I had the same difficulties that I'm sure a lot of people, because coming into it, you were splitting up with the other school district. And so it is, from last year, you weren't part of that district, and so it has to be divided up amongst.
Sorry, I don't.
Can I, yeah, I'll put my hand in after Charlie.
Sorry, Karen. So previously, we talked about a billion and something. Is this just a revised version of that?
That was for '21, which it is a million.
Oh, I see, this is a power.
This is '22. This is the very recent number.
No, no, I get it.
Just for '22.
So we're looking at approximately 1.6 million in a surplus of two years combined that we as a board will need to consider and then make recommendations to the townspeople.
Thank you. I get it.
Okay. Go ahead, Karen.
Okay, so that's clearer now, because when we were at the meeting with everybody, and there was a conversation about how much monies would go to Westminster and not, and it was agreed upon by everybody that is there at that meeting, you remember? So what we're talking about, Cheryl, is what you just described, it helped to understand that, which is those monies, and then this, you know, that fiscal year, and then this is, and you know, we'll come up with another number that we have to go to.
That's correct. And you're remembering the meeting where.
Yes.
Where it was the '21 surplus that was being.
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Since that time, the townspeople in all three towns voted to approve that distribution. That has not yet occurred with the '22 surplus that, numbers that have been shared with us on a preliminary basis tonight, Karen.
Yes, thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, everybody.
Anything else you want?
Just want to quickly, the second and third page, which is the object summary page, and then there's a function summary page. And I just wanted to say, these are essentially the objects that we will use in the coming budget. And, you know, we're trying to refine, trying to refine downward some of the objects that you used to use. And I'll just reference, in Supplies, there was food that was broken out. And, you know, we've combined it, thrown it back in the food, and tried to streamline some of the object codes and functions. So we're trying to do that, because it's absolutely necessary in streamlining what we're doing and how we're doing it. You know, as we looked through last year and tried, because that 20-digit code that I had referenced as the state is using, well, I mean, that's, that's only one digit off. And we did find there was one teacher that was coded over to Grapton and was picked up, and we put it back into Westminster. So, that would mean it's a tough game.
So you're saying that you're trying to streamline the coding so that one code has multiple things underneath it, that are assumed within that code?
Yes, and I mean, I see another example, I'll hold you up, but Guidance and Nursing, the teachers that are in both of those entities. Now, they were, before, they were coded as a 5171. And we're coding them as a 5111, because they're a teacher. So all their teachers are coded with a 5111. And, you know, that's the way we're doing it, because it cuts down. Any place that we can cut down and counts is streamlining for what we're doing and how we're doing it. And we've got to get there. Because we've got angle requests right now.
Okay. Having said that, you might not yet know this, Margie, but one of the good things about the merger with Athens and Grapton for the last three years was that supervisory union and the accounting office, even though challenged, still it was possible for us to see all the expenses by given building. And that's been part of how it can be shown now, that on our more than $6 million shared budget, it was 4.5 million that was attributed to Westminster. So we actually had a good and clear sense of that. And that's the budget, in particular, the numbers that are specific to the Westminster Center Building and the West West Roof. Those are the numbers that Liz really works on, and she'll be taking the first cut at this budget. Jim is giving us some preliminary suggestions, saying that the SU Office is going to help us. Having said that, you know, it starts with Liz, as the principal, we're going to take it in part. The last thing I'd quickly point out, and what Jim just gave us, you'll see in the second and the third pages, adopted 23 budget, adopted a 23 budget on both pages. That is, the 4.6 million dollar budget is the budget that townspeople at Westminster voted to approve. And that is where we start this fiscal year. So it's exactly consistent with what's approved.
That's right. And I knew it also lasted about Cognos, as the Cognos report. And let's know if Rick, if Rick wants to give an update. I do not do anything with Cognos. And the only reason I say that is I called at the Aids, at the Agency of Education, and I said, look, you know, I want to understand that. And he said, look, he said, your numerating is this, this Cognos is so complex, you'll never understand it without going through an extensive training and force. So, Rick, what's the question?
The question was, I had asked for all board members every two weeks to get the report. We had gotten from Cognos, it simply shows the budget figure, what we spent today, and what's been incurred today. And so we've still not set up, at least for us, to see the Westminster budget. And that was my question, and you made it.
Okay, we did nothing to that.
Okay, that's, I just want all of us to be able to track the numbers every two weeks as we have previously. Okay?
The one for all of the school year or?
Not for Westminster, the numbers, we were sent over for Grapton.
I've got one other question.
Okay.
So on that first page, this is a surplus we're talking about.
Correct, yes. Un-audited.
Un-audited.
I mean, that's the, yes.
Estimated, yeah.
Okay, so we created a budget, we spent this much, this is in surplus of that.
At the end of June 30th, 2022, not added, as Jim just said.
Right, right.
That's correct.
Okay, that's correct.
If there are no more questions for Jim, we'll turn to the principal to talk. But I will keep an eye on the question.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we've had quite a busy summer, actually. We started in June, a group of administrators went to the Vest Institute in Killington, Vermont. I went with Judy Barresby, who'll be our story practice teacher here at Westminster. And the Vest Institute is an annual four-day conference that focuses on improving schools' systems by learning what new strategies and practices that emphasize positive research-based strategies to support all students. Judy and I spent much of this time discussing and planning the opening of our Reconnection Room to have a restorative, proactive approach, starting with the beginning of the school year. We had our summer camp, well, it's still happening, starting from July 5th, going till August 5th. And we are at capacity with 75 students every week. The mornings are more academically focused, and the afternoons are taped by theme, like a science theme, or a nature, art, gardening. Every Wednesday, campers come to the BF rec. And every Friday, they go on a field trip to a trampoline park, or bowling, or, I think tomorrow they're going to Swan Lake in New Hampshire. It's been really wonderful, a great turnout. That is Westminster and Grapton, and I believe there are 18 participants in Grapton, and then the rest are Westminster students. We're also lining up professional development for our teachers for the fall. We'll be, we had resupped the classroom, the introduction course last year. We'll be moving into the advanced course in the fall. And any new staff coming on board from Westminster were asked to take the introduction course this summer. So they'll be up to speed, starting in the beginning of the school year. They have two days in August, a day in September, and a day in January, it's a four-day course in all. The other big news is our nature-based learning professional development. There's seven staff members from Westminster who are part of this learning institute, and the opportunity is funded through ESR, that's a COVID grant, and offered through ANIAC. And the purpose of this learning is to provide a foundation of understanding of the nature-based education. And this will take place the week of August 8th, right here at Westminster. And it's really the first step of subsequent PD opportunities to enhance the understanding and the practice of nature-based learning strategies. We have a whole lot to do, really. We're planning our back-to-school picnic. I saw on the agenda it was something about parent engagement. And we're going to start with the Monday before school starts, I believe it's the 29th, August 29th. So the classrooms will be open from 5:30 to 6:00. And then around 6-ish, 6:15-ish, we'll have our grill going for families to come outside and join us for a picnic.
When is that, Sarah?
It's a Monday, August 29th. We'll be putting something out. We kind of wait until August to start knocking on parents' doors about, and go about school. Yeah, let them, you know, really soak up the summer. Capital Project, wanted to touch base about that a little bit. ESR Fund, so the COVID-related grant is going to fund our smart pumps. And that concept has been approved, the construction grant has been approved, and the bid has been accepted. And we have scheduled, they will be coming in sometime in September and October, or October to do that work, before the heating season. The other two things that are on our list for ESR approval are the roof, the West West Roof, and the east end of this building, that roof project. And that was resubmitted on July 11th, so we're waiting to hear back from the state regarding that approval. We're also working with Efficiency Vermont to fund our exhaust project here in the building. We just really have an inconsistency with exhaust happening throughout the building. And we are waiting for notification from Vermont Efficiency to see how, when we can move forward with that project being funded through. Other than that, we have been working on, for you and I have been working on providing a small camera, security camera for the West West Building. Do you know why? They don't have any, so you don't know who's on the other side of the door, so you're stepping in the door, which feels really unsafe. Small things like replacing heating valves that weren't working, installing a kitchen valve, or kitchen flooring was fixed already. There was a sensor in our kindergarten room that always read that it was like 88 degrees or something. So we fixed that sensor. And one thing that we might want to think about, too, is to bring in a second oil tank. If you remember, last year, we were burning a lot more oil than we needed. And we have a 250 gallon tank that we were filling every other day, which would mean that we had companies coming on weekends, and it became a bigger issue of the thought of having two oil tanks. That'd be something to want to think about as a school, just for that peace of mind. Anything more to add? But other than that, those are our projects that we can have on board for this year.
Any questions? Karen, any questions for you?
I was unmuted just to make it, no questions, thank you so much. Sounds fantastic.
The smart, certain heat pumps? Yes, yeah, yeah.
I know you're still hiring, but is all of the hiring successful and everything?
Yes, we are also looking for a night-time janitor. Unsuccessfully.
But all the teaching staff?
Yes, all the other teaching staff is hired.
Right.
Good point, yes.
How about an update on the numbers of students? Is it consistent with where it was a few weeks ago?
Yeah, I just checked in about kindergarten enrollment today. So we have 33 students on our, we have a document that we keep track of, and it is not always accurate, because kids don't, the kids move, or they don't end up coming to kindergarten here. But at this point, we had 33 students on our document that we keep track of through the years, and we have had 30 who have sent in kindergarten registration paperwork.
Andy said he has one more thing to add.
Outstanding, Andy, please.
And thank you, and as Liz was giving her update, I just remembered, and I wanted to just update the board and the public. We had the state come down, they're conducting a safety audit for us. And so we met, Liz and I, and her maintenance staff met with him and went over some things. And we'll be getting a written feedback from them, and just, we'll share that with the board as it comes. But, you know, we're, as she was talking about the security camera, maybe you reminded me of that, so.
Very good, thank you. Could you, Liz, say more about the open house? So that all board members who might know about what would be entailed, please?
Yeah, so we'd like to open our classrooms the Monday before the first day of school. This is an opportunity for families to come in, see the classroom, put a face with a name with their teacher, for students to ease some nerves that they might have with the first day of school. And then we also have a dinner outside for families to join us, and they can just eat kind of in our field and stay as long as they want. But we do close up the classrooms around 6:30.
And would you like us to come, do you want?
We would love, as many community members as possible. We'd love board members to come, of course, yes.
So we, given that Fact TV is reporting it, community members are welcome as well?
Of course, yes, yes, so the building will be open.
And, you know, this is at a time when the building has been closed a lot for the last two years, so I think we really would encourage, as you are, community members to come. And certainly, I would urge board members to come personally.
This is, am I right? I'm not back until the 1st of September, so I'm going to have to make a plan, Liz, to come anyway, as I wanted to, to be able to meet the teachers. And we'll go through that, but I'm not going to be able to make the open house, it sounds like, so I'm sorry to say that.
That's okay, we're very optimistic that we'll be able to lean into some of our traditions that Westminster has had before, that we haven't been able to welcome families to. So I'll be reporting on that as the same as I am now.
What if now, for example, we all school meetings, does it look now as if those could be known? What you're thinking about?
There are no, there's no guidance from the state that they can't be. And we would like them, we would like to resume them in person. We were revoked last year, we were removed from classrooms. And which had its pros, definitely, but we would like to bring everyone together in the gym.
So we'll still have to see, given the risk of comparing with COVID, there's still reason to be cautious. But what you've just said, to reinforce it, is that you'll be looking for ways to involve community members to come.
Yeah.
Maybe it's in small groups, maybe it's in larger groups all at once.
Yeah, right, yeah, just kind of opening the doors slowly, right? I think it was last year where I wanted to do the picnic, and I was talking to Trish, "How can we do our picnic?", and she said, "Oh, we don't have to do everything all at once." I go, "Okay, we don't have to do it", and we had the open house, but we didn't have the picnic. So I think we're just opening our doors a little bit further this year.
Any other questions? Yes, good.
Yeah, so you're talking about the heat pumps, the roof, the exhaust, and the second oil tank, those are kind of like the big things.
Yeah.
And the heat pumps are part of the ESR COVID line? Is the exhaust part of that, too?
We're hoping to fund that through Vermont Efficiency.
Okay, not through, because it feels like exhaust should be part of that COVID-y, get the air out, right?
Yeah, I just think it probably could be. And I think we were just thinking, if this is an opportunity, this is just another way we could fund it.
Right, yeah, okay. And the second oil tank's probably not eligible for those COVID dollars.
It's about $3,500.
So is that, that doesn't have to be dollars to install, install, meaning to. So I think it doesn't, it's not the amount either that you would mean that it has to be $5,000 to qualify for.
I'm just thinking, how could we, yeah, use those?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else for Liz? Okay, well, very, very excited. Thank you, all the support for everybody coming back. And it sounds like they do have a track.
Yeah, we're excited.
Do you have for item seven on the agenda, any reservations or complaints?
No, I would say.
So looking at the, the agenda a little further, what you just said a few moments ago, though, about openings, we still then are looking for an IT janitor and a school nurse.
Yes.
For this school in particular.
Yes.
This?
Yes.
This will, for Westminster?
Yes, and, and now, I'm lax, I'm lying. I know, I know, I was in my pediatric office with my own child and.
Yeah.
On the corner of the nurse.
Do we, do we have like a basic budget, like a ballpark of what, who they pay them?
They would be part of CBA. They would be on a teacher's CBA with a teacher contact.
With their, with their experience.
Cool. Yeah.
Okay, okay. What was that called, the CBA?
Yeah.
That's a collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
Or voting on one to manage.
Okay. Including Venn?
Yes, yes.
So I'm going to go next to older unfinished business, and there's nothing on the agenda. It's open, but I would like to kind of restate our committee assignments for a minute, just to review them. Charlie, you're serving on the policy committee, I mean that last night. So thank you very much for doing that. And buildings and grounds, Karen, you're on that. And that's getting, um, there's a new supervisory union wide buildings and grounds committee. So you will be asked to serve on that, just because Andy is looking for a way, and so is Jack Brier, the chair of the supervisory union board, to get a feeling for what are the needs in all of the buildings, security. Andy, I think would be one. Our, um, the, uh, the curriculum related, um, committee team is on warrants. Karen and I are signing, the finance committee I'm on, and the Esser committee Liz and I are both on. But if anybody has interest in any of these at any time, actually Charlie's also on.
I saw the technology.
Exactly, that's what I just saw on my notes as well. So those committee meetings are really important, and I think everybody would be a part of that as well. New business for discussion. The first of those items is the ratification of the support staff collective bargaining agreement. And, uh, that has been circulated to some extent. Not sure actually whether you've seen that. And so if not, there may be questions. I actually served as the spokesperson for the board, uh, negotiating team, and Kate Kane was the spokesperson for the support staff team. We met for several months, it was a true negotiations process, and came to, I think it was a pleasant settlement. The agreement is now to be voted on by each of the respective school districts and the supervisory union board. It's been approved now by Rockingham, by the supervisory union board, and by the high school board. Tonight, we'll also do on the agenda, Athens and Raptin, that's on our agenda. So it's a, it's a positive agreement. It's a four year agreement, which we'll lose to be able to say. And one of the reasons that was proposed is it's a teacher agreement that we also negotiated this year, is a three year agreement. And in times past, it's often been the case that the teacher negotiation process has somehow, sometimes taken quite a long time. And, and the support staff has been waiting patiently to have their needs and first addressed. So now by having them rotating years, that's what we're going to accomplish. And that was with attention to everybody that was pleased with that as well.
So may I ask a question of, it's a technology question. Is there any way to increase the volume on the speakers? In other words, I don't know what the system is, if there is a volume thingy to be done. It's, it's fine, I just have, if you see me leaning in and my face is right up against what I, the doc, you know, the technology I'm using, it's because, because I'm putting my ear as close as I can. It's just your soft spoken a bit. I heard everybody. I don't mean I didn't hear everybody, but it's a, if there's a way to increase the volume, it'd be great. If not, it's okay.
Is that any better, Karen?
Yes, that's better. Thank you so much.
Although that was Ricky's voice, is mine any better?
Yes, yours is, no, yours is better. He, I think what he did was he increased the volume a bit. That's, that's great. Thanks.
We, I got a copy of it from Nicole's morning, so I've read it.
Great. And, and, and Margie hopefully was on that list as well. I know Karen has received it.
Yes.
And I've seen it as well. So I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, the collective bargaining agreement, the support staff.
Were you intending any questions about it?
Of course.
So it seems all evidently reasonable. Just questions, are there any major departures in disagreement from previous agreements? Are there any new, new policies that are, that are essentially the same as before?
Well, there are new elements, um, I think it's fair to say, there are some, uh, there's an increase in term life insurance that's consistent with how the teachers were awarded as an example. I would say that, uh, there are no, there are no dramatic changes, but there are incremental positive increases in compensation for the support staff. And that makes it possible, um, for Andy, in an, as an employer, looking for telling people to come our way, it puts us more in the middle of what's going on in this region rather than at a lower end. It's a, these are nice and fair increases, I might say.
And I see that you, that it includes, um, one of the terms is carrying an experience from previous, from previous work experience.
Oh, absolutely. People's prior experience, that, you know, it, it depends, there is some discretion on the part of administration. Andy, maybe you want to speak to that question, the, the question about prior experience and how that is assessed?
Um, so typically, um, whether it's a teacher or a paraprofessional custodian or whatever, when we look at their resume, we're looking at what have, you know, do they have experience working in schools or equivalent experience? So with a paraprofessional, we might have someone who maybe didn't work in schools, but worked in, um, a childcare setting, um, a private childcare setting. So we would try and assess, is it an equivalent of a year to a year? Or would we reduce that down? So, um, in, in the past, there's been times where we've said, like, we'll count two years as one year kind of thing, uh, because it wasn't the equivalent of, of what our typical people do, so. But that's typically how we try to take that into consideration.
One other thing I noticed is in section 14, um, the question, who gets paid on a snow day, for instance? So it sounds, it, it's clear that custodians get paid, they're required, it's not explicit, but it's implied that nobody else does. Is that, is that intentional?
Andy, if you want to address that.
Hey, I apologize, did you repeat that?
Yes, in, in section 14, the question of, you know, on, on days where schools close for snow days or whatever. And it says certain employees are still required to, to, to report for work and that they will be paid. It doesn't speak to the folks who are not required to work. The implication is they don't get paid, they lose a day's pay. Is that?
Well, they don't, they don't lose, they don't lose a day's pay. So let me clarify that. So custodians work 261 days, so they're working year round. So if we're closed, then, then we're asking them to report to work. If they're unable to report to work, they, there's a compensation there. But a paraprofessional works 179 days. So therefore, they're here only during school hours. And so if we're closed, we're still, we, we have to push our days out at, at the end of the year. So they still work those 179 days, they just, they're just not compensated for that day. But their, their salaries are annualized anyway, so, um, so they have a consistent paycheck.
All right, so that, that implies that every day lost to snow will be repeated at the end of the year. Is that true? Every single snow day is, is made up?
Yes, unless there's a circumstance like we had this past year with COVID, or if there was some monumental reason that we might ask the secretary for a waiver. So, um, but typically, if we have a, if we have a, a snow day or a school closure for some reason, let's say, I'm going to make something up here, but let's say, um, the transformer blew on the, on the pole right outside of the school, and there was a safety hazard, so we had to close school for the day. We would then be required to make that day up. So.
Yeah.
Was there a question? Did you have a question, Karen?
Oh, no, I did not. I did not.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I've ended, well, actually, I don't know whether, you moved, I know you wanted to have a conversation, but did you put the motion?
I didn't put a motion, I was supposed to vote for that conversation first, but I'm not sure if that's in order or not. She said, okay, so I'm, I'm done.
You, are you making the motion that we approve the?
I will if you'd like to.
Yes.
About should we approve the CBA this month, this fall?
Support staff collective bargaining agreement.
Agreement has ended.
And any, this, there is still.
I second it.
Hey, thank you, Karen, thank you. I will comment that I didn't say this previously, the union, the people representing the support staff have also already approved this agreement. So.
I have one question. Who's considered support staff?
Paraprofessionals.
I see.
This bit that you probably couldn't be heard is the paraprofessionals. It is the custodians. And it's also two special new categories that were included in the CBA this year. Andy, you want to address those?
Yeah, so, um, the speech language pathologist assistants, or SLPA's, and the certified occupational therapy assistants, um, they both, they both those groups, about six individuals, voted to have WNEA represent them. And so they were added to the collective bargaining, um, agreement this year.
That's correct, thank you. And I will say about changes, uh, there is now a, a new category in addition to the two new, uh, roles that Andy just described who are now a part of this, the two specialty areas. There's also a category of paraprofessional two, which is a way to differentiate people who have additional, uh, training, uh, and allowing us to compensate them at a slightly higher rate for their additional, um, work and skills. And one other thing that was added in negotiations was to recognize people who, in the paraprofessional category, who've been here beyond where our salary level stops, our compensation level stops. It was at 16 years at this point. And we added 20 years, 25, and 30, as at least a gesture of appreciation for those people who are still with us. And years, and having them be able to get some additional compensation. So I think it is honestly very fair to say that this was a collaborative process, there was give and take, there were, you know, a lot of going back and forth. And, uh, as I say, the union has approved it, and several of the boards have, and I certainly encourage our approval.
So we have a second here and.
That's, that's right. Let me just, uh, roll call, uh, Karen, your vote, please?
Uh, yes.
Margie?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I'll add my S. Okay, thank you. I, thank you very much. So I'm now looking at, we, this same Zoom number is going to be used for the Athens Raptin meeting in a few minutes. And so looking at the agenda, plans for community engagement, we've had a little bit of discussion of that already, we'll pick that up going forward, and that'll be ongoing.
Yeah.
Throughout the year. The preliminary budget planning, Jim has brought us some things to think about in the documents he shared tonight. He took a little look at 24, and so that's the beginning of budgeting process. And we will spend more time with you on all of that. We have a parent request that I would, I would like us to go into executive session for, and I will make that, um, motion in just a moment. Before we do that, I think I would ask for director's comments. We'll go into an executive session, we'll come back out to report whatever action was taken in the executive session, and we'll aim to be done by five minutes of six with this. And look forward to, uh, a more conversational meeting going forward. But, um, with, with that, may I ask for any director's comments briefly tonight, if you would like to? Yes, Charlie?